I call this meeting of the Prosper Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present. That this meeting has been duly called and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. We have a lot to get on today, but we'll start with the invocation. And Mr. Beavers, I asked you to do that, but I don't remember what you said. I hope you said yes.
I did. I said yes.
Great. Well, then will you please open a sin and prayer tonight?
I will. Father, we thank you for this day and thank you for this time that we could come together, Lord. Father, right now, we just ask for, uh, for healing right now, Lord. For, uh, for the country, specifically our state and our district. Father, right now, we have, um, uh, we thank you for this time that families could spend more time together, Lord. But, uh, we have a lot of teachers that are hurting right now, Lord, that have just, uh, they're missing the end of the year with their students, Lord. And we just pray right now, we want to lift them up, Lord, that, uh, we thank you so much that, that, uh, they love their classroom and they love their students, Lord, and they love doing their job. So we just pray that you would encourage them right now. Lord, we ask for wisdom as we, uh, make the decisions that will affect the, the, uh, school district this year and in the coming year. And, uh, Lord, just be with us through the next few weeks, get us through the end of the year and into summer. We pray all these things in your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Bill. I appreciate that very much. So I guess the first order of business is, I'm looking at the agenda. Do we have, uh, any open, I don't know how you even know that.
Wait, uh, just a second for sure.
They can raise their hand.
How do they do that?
If they hover over their controls.
Uh, for anyone who has an interest, uh, in, uh, speaking in open forum, uh, you can hover over your,
controls.
Your controls and you can raise your hand. I'll give that. A little bit.
Right. Well, then, um, with that, Drew, I guess let's move into the consent agenda.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, we skipped the pledge of allegiance.
We did.
Sorry. Sorry. So let's stand and do our pledge of allegiance. I don't have a flag I'm looking at, but, okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag.
The United States of America.
America. To the republic which stands.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God. Indivisible.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all. There you go. Very good. Can't forget that. Okay, now let's go into, uh, consent agenda, Drew, please.
Sir, you have, uh, see here. Hold on just a second. I need to get. Technical support again when the screen comes up. Okay, there we go. Uh, you got. Minutes. Uh, here you can see the, enrollment. We've picked up, I guess, about eighty-five kids since all this started. I don't know how that happens. It just does.
So how do they, how do they enroll? Just online?
Uh, yeah, yes, sir. The, uh, they, uh, everybody, all the campuses are still manned virtually. So if they come through central office, because everybody can enter the, uh, school phones either at school or from their devices at home. So we have that covered.
Good.
And then you have the, uh, board update.
Yeah.
It's all moving. Uh, everything's come to a standstill except, instruction.
Well, we should, yeah, I was gonna say, so construction is still proceeding.
Yes, sir. That's, uh,
You, you said something about being worried about part of it or, uh,
Furniture.
Furniture.
Uh, yeah, the, uh, one of the providers of, of our furniture has, uh, uh, they should be factory. So, uh, uh, we're, we're figuring that out. It is, it's possible that, if we don't get it all in, we'll be moving furniture from other campuses, just like we're moving kids. And so could that result in a new building not having all perfectly matched stuff happen? It happened. Uh, we'll figure out a way to make sure everybody has a seat. And it's, we're not yet to, you know, DEFCON five on that. It's, uh, we're hoping, you know, pretty quickly they, they start, uh, back up. But we're, we're looking at all the, all the options right now.
Okay.
In terms of the actual construction, it's all, it's all moving forward. It would be wonderful if during this horrible time, uh, Fishtrap could be completely shut down and completed. But that would be just hopeful.
Yeah. It'd be nice.
It's, if those that haven't been over there, my advice is don't, uh, but if you're, if you're curious, uh, to go see how it's all torn up and right in front of rushing, go ahead and make, uh, at last, it's, it's pretty messed up.
Okay.
Good. Are we ready for a motion?
I'm going through.
Yeah, it's very nice.
This is Rock Hill.
Beautiful. You see the art, you saw the article, I'm sure, in the paper today about Rock Hill.
Yes, sir. This is the transportation facility, uh, uh, in front of Rock Hill. And I'm gonna go ahead.
Yeah, Jana, we'll let this, we'll let Holly do this presentation and then we'll do this motion.
All right, Ms. Ferguson, it should be all yours.
Okay, thank you. Thank you to the board too for giving us this chance to speak about what we're doing in this new environment of learning. I'd first like to commend our teachers and staff in the way that they have truly just embraced and rallied around the whole concept of really just undoing and putting education back together in a whole new way in the matter of about forty-eight hours. So it was truly impressive. I want to thank all of the directors and the principals too for their leadership through this. And specifically, uh, Mr. Dave Olasko and Mr. O'Neil for their support on the instructional technology end of things. Because there's absolutely no way we could be doing what we're doing without the technology piece of this, so. But I want to commend you as a board for your visionary work that you've done, because about six years ago, we embarked upon purchasing Chromebooks. And you continue to commit to that throughout those six years. And we would not be able to do what we're doing in this moment had it not been you all really embracing that and seeing the vision of where we needed to go with instructional technology. So my hat's off to you.
Well, that's great to hear. Thank you.
Okay, so let's jump into a few things. If we'll advance the slide, please.
Can you not advance it, Ms. Ferguson?
No, sir.
Okay.
Okay, tonight what we're going to discuss are the devices and technology, just the basic, how much of those different equipment pieces do we have out and about in our district? We're gonna specifically look at the instruction and how we're delivering that. Our attendance and then students that were, that are not on the radar and how we're going about making sure that we are providing education to them. I want to highlight the work of special education, speak a little bit about the AP exams, because through the college board, that's a very different approach than anything we've ever seen in the past. And they are not, uh, disregarding those exams. They're gonna continue to forge ahead with giving those to students. Our grading guidelines, so you'll have an idea of how we've adjusted those in comparison to what we typically do in normal times. And then resources that we have in place for parents. So our devices and technology, I know that you all were provided this presentation several weeks ago. So we're actually closer to around seven thousand devices that have been deployed throughout Prosper ISD to support student learning. And you can see on that very first day, on the eighteenth of March, we did over five thousand devices. Every single elementary was utilized and there was a team stationed at every elementary to provide curbside service to our families. And families could pull up and pick up devices for an elementary student, their middle school student and their high school student. So it was truly a one-stop-shop opportunity for them. And then the technology department, because we do have students who do not have internet access in Prosper ISD. And so we have now given out fifty-eight hotspots to students so that they can have internet access in order to be able to complete their online instructions. So, uh, we were to return from spring break, which we did on March sixteenth, but our students didn't return on that day. As you know, the communication went out. We brought our team together, although we had been working over the spring break period of time in order to start planning and getting prepared for the what-if if we were not able to return to school, just based on what was happening across our nation. And so on March eighteenth, Prosper ISD began online instruction for students. And the great thing that happened is that really our students and our staff were completely trained up and ready to go with anything technology-based. We utilize Google Classroom and classrooms every single day. And we also, when we're looking at our early childhood, we've been using a platform pretty heavily called Seesaw, which is, there's some information on that on the next slide. We had to really look at the standards, because the standards are very deep and wide and far-reaching. And so our curriculum team had already done some excellent work, working in collaboration with our teachers to identify essential standards. And those essential standards really allowed us to nail down specifically what is it that students are going to need to really be able to maintain and continue to grow in their learning over the course of the time that we would be out for the COVID nineteen. So these are the benefits of Seesaw. And, um, if you have younger children, what you can see is they actually can make videos and take pictures of their work. They can submit that to the teacher as well as show to a parent what they're learning and doing in real time, which is just a really valuable, valuable tool. And so we're, we're very fortunate that we have the ability to, to utilize Google Classroom as well as Seesaw for our early childhood students.
So Holly, while you're, while you're on that subject, can you just give us a, maybe a brief synopsis of what you think, you know, a, a day in the life of a teacher is right now? I mean, how they're interacting with their kids and?
Yes, so that is an excellent question. Um, so what our teachers are doing is they're using the feature in Google Classroom pretty frequently called Google Chat, where students can message them directly. And then the teacher can get into a Google Hangout, um, with that student or with a group of students. If they need to pull a group of students, they do that virtually through being able to send a Google Meet to those students and then being able to sit and work with that small group of students over an area of learning that they may have struggled in or that they need support in. We also can utilize that feature, because we do recognize and appreciate the fact that our, our parents have now become the teachers at home. And so if the parents are needing support, they can also utilize Google Meet, be able to connect with the teacher to get clarification on how they need to deliver instruction or questions that they might have about the week's assignments.
Thank you.
Uh, student attendance. So we have a Google form that Mr. O'Neil and his team created. So we'd be standard and consistent across the board with all students in Prosper ISD. And each and every day, we ask for our students to submit their name, both first and last, and that's how they submit their attendance electronically to the teacher. Our teachers are then, um, charting that and collecting that data to ensure that the students are showing up. And I will say our teachers are doing an excellent job of reaching out to parents to let the, the parents know if they've not, their student has not, logged in and taken care of that task. There are also, um, when we're seeing that students are showing a pattern of not submitting attendance or that work is not being done, then that is our ability or gives us the chance to be able to reach out to families to let them know that the attendance is not being completed or that there is schoolwork that's not being completed, to see how we can help support and what those missing pieces might be as far as the technology usage or just not understanding the instruction might be a reason. And then beyond that, um, our teachers are then reporting into our administrators and then our administrators are also making calls, reaching out through text, some home visits, um, of course, practicing social distancing. And then our Prosper ISD Police Department has really stepped up and also helping us with making those home visits and, of course, maintaining social distance.
And just to reiterate one point, all the attendance part is making sure that we are tracking which students were engaging. This, uh, this has not, uh, uh, little to nothing to do with funding. The state's already said how they're gonna determine attendance for funding. So this is making sure that we don't have any kids AWOL on us and slipping through without making sure they're engaged in.
So special education, this is probably one of the more difficult areas in order to be able to deliver e-instruction or e-learning, because our students' needs are so specific and individualized, individualized by each child. Dr. Hickey and her team have done an outstanding, outstanding job, because they had to get consent, because of FERPA, um, when students are in a Google Classroom setting, because you have other special education students that are visible to parents. And so she had to get consent along with the support and help of her team. And so you can see that we currently have two thousand one hundred and thirty-five responses for consent with only about thirty-four parents at this point in time who have not responded. For those parents that have not responded, we have sent out communication letters, letting them know that we're ready, willing and able to serve their students and that we are ready to provide instruction and that we, we want their child in instruction. She and her team also, the, the staff, the special education staff, whether it resource teachers or centralized programs, went up to the schools and they actually boxed and labeled the specific instructional materials that were needed for each individual child. And then the parents could, uh, we actually had the school bus drivers, they helped us out and went and delivered those actual materials to the home of the special education students. Again, practicing social distancing, but placing those on the doorstep, um, of the home, so that the parents had exactly what those different materials are that we utilize every day in instruction to provide education to their students. Um, we are continuing on with our admission, review and dismissal meetings in a virtual format. And so that means service providers, parents, uh, principals are all participating in those and still keeping those on schedule and meeting timelines. And then, um, AP exams. Uh, one other thing about special education, we are continuing on to with completing evaluations to the best of our ability. There are pieces that will, it will be difficult to do, but we're doing the best that we can, given the virtual environment, to make sure that we are fulfilling the requirements of those evaluation deadlines. The AP exams, uh, we're actually going to go into an online environment. Our students will be tested for their AP exam between May eleventh and May twenty-second. So that is the block of time. And then any makeup test that occurred will be June first through fifth. They'll need to access and use their, um, devices. And then our teachers, the great thing is, is that the college board said that they would only be testing the information covered through early March. So that took a lot of pressure off of our AP teachers, because they're kind of in, you know, really go mode as soon as we get back from spring break. So that really helped with that adjustment. And our testing will be in a free response, uh, question format, which our students have been practicing all year long. And so our teachers feel, um, very confident in the ability of our students to perform well on that AP exam. Our grading guidelines. So at elementary, what we typically do is you're looking at a range of about four to six major grades and then a range of about twelve to sixteen daily grades or so that are going in, in typical circumstances. So what we did is we wanted to scale that back. So there's four, a minimum of four to a maximum of six daily grades being collected. And we're only utilizing that forty percent category, because we're not, um, really trying to give students tests and things like that. They typically go into that sixty percent category. We want to see how they're doing in a very formative way to be able to adjust instruction based on the needs of the students and certainly of the parents who again are taking on the work of being the teacher and the support in the instruction. And then at secondary, we adjusted the minimum of grades per area, um, of course, and that was for a minimum of eight to a maximum of ten daily grades. Again, only utilizing the forty percent category. And then we will not be giving final exams or semester exams to our students at the end of the year. And the, so the question has come up, because we have kind of a split vote across kind of the, the area that we're in, in this North Texas area, but then across the state. And why not pass/fail grades for students? That can become very problematic moving forward. So a freshman who has a pass/fail during this COVID nineteen, once they become a senior in high school and have a pass/fail versus a numeric grade, and we start doing class rank and GPA, if we just had a pass/fail, it's very hard to know exactly what was that number. And so we have been really guided by our state agencies as well as our regional agencies to stay the course with the numeric grades, but make adjusted, adjustments to the grading guidelines. We also have to keep in mind that our dual credit students who are participating in dual credit classes through Call &amp; College are still receiving numerical grades. So then you have that adjustment that then occurs with a pass/fail versus a numeric grade coming in with dual credit. Um, so we feel like at this time, this is our absolute best course of action. We also want to think about those students that are going on to college to be college athletes, because this will be problematic for NCAA also with a pass/fail. And then resources for parents, uh, our library services with Dr. Mann, Dr. Kidd with Curriculum and Instruction, and then Mr. O'Neil, uh, with our instructional media are working together, along with our curriculum teams and different support, librarians and instructional technology, to create a one-stop shop for parents if they need additional resources. But we also felt like this would be a great resource for parents to continue learning throughout the summer months, um, as we continue to move into the beginning of the school year. Any questions?
That was great, Holly.
Thank you.
What are we thinking about, uh, I don't know, it's probably not under the, uh, this umbrella, but what do we, what options are we seeing for graduation?
We're actually looking at a, a couple of different options. Certainly, we have considered the virtual option, but we also are looking at still an in-person with a modified date for when we could get in-person. We know that there will be, uh, families that are not comfortable with that. And we know that we have families that would be comfortable with a later date. So instead of graduation being some type of mandatory event, then it would be more based on choice and the comfort of that family. But, uh, Dr. Burdette and his team have been doing a great job of really coming up with different viable options of what that might look like and, um, really collaborating with us at the central office level to ensure that our students are honored for the thirteen years of education that they have completed.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, uh, that is the,
One, one more quick thing, if, uh, if I have it, let me see if I have it. If not, I'll grab it later, which I don't think I do. So we'll work on that later. I'm sorry.
Well, the, that is the, that's the end of the consent agenda. So we need a motion to approve that.
Deborah Smith makes a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Bill Beaver, just a second.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Deborah. All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have any opposed? All right, hearing none, we will move on to, uh, the next item.
All right, we've got the, um, adoption, uh, approval of purchase, new adoption for English Language Arts instructional materials. So I, I recommend that you approve, uh, this adoption will come out of, uh, IMA, uh, funds, instructional materials, the law of the funds. As long as we have them, when that runs out, then it, it goes to just the general fund. So I recommend that you approve.
Okay.
This is Jana Thompson. I make a recommendation to approve the instructional materials.
Thank you, Jana. Do I have a second?
It's Mays. I'll second.
Thank you, Mays. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
On to, uh, business and I'm gonna see if I can. Ms. Farmer on. Ms. Farmer. There you go. You're muted, Ms. Farmer.
Okay, here we go. Just gonna run through a brief overview. We've got fourteen slides and I'm just gonna go over them very quickly for everyone. Uh, these are the financial position as of March thirty-first for the district. This slide here is an investment summary. It's focusing on our funding groups. General fund, as you can see, is a hundred and fifty-eight million dollars of a two-hundred-and-seventy-eight million dollar portfolio. And it's fifty-six percent of the overall total. Our weighted average yield through March thirty-first of this year is one point oh eight. And previous month, it was one point six. We saw a declining trend even before we entered March. The second one is also just by investment, uh, groups. So you can see tax pool right now is our primary investment pool. We have a hundred and thirty-eight million dollars, um, in that investment pool, which represents forty-nine percent. And again, these are just a different way to look at the investment summary by banks. Percentage increase, uh, from this time last year in our portfolio is fourteen point three percent. Investment summary by fund, uh, this time last year, we are two-hundred-and-nine million. And right now, we're standing at two-hundred-and-seventy-eight million, which is a thirty-three percent increase overall. General fund, total operating revenue for the general fund year-to-date is a hundred and forty million, which is twenty-one percent increase from where we were prior year. And the revenue comparison in state and local, which is collected a hundred and forty million versus budgeted of one-hundred-and-fifty-one million. So we are on track. Our percent complete is a robust ninety-two, almost ninety-three percent. And last year, we were at eighty-eight percent at this time. Current tax collections, uh, we are at, um, a hundred and one percent of levy. And as you can see, uh, you will see on the coming slides, that's, um, a lot of that's due to some rollback tax collections. You see, we've had a significant increase the last two months in rollback collections. On the expenditure side, we've spent ninety-four million dollars, uh, which is a twenty-two percent increase over this time prior year. But that follows, uh, again, with our increase in our overall budget. Total expenditure comparison. Uh, we have completed fifty-nine, almost sixty percent of our budget, which is just one percent higher than where we were last year. So we're trending right along the same pace. And expenditures by functional group, um, those are also as budgeted, so there's no, um, no changes there. Food service fund, we can see current year, our food service is operating right now in a net cash flow deficit. Um, since we stopped right after spring break, that's not surprising, uh, year-to-date. We have been in contact with, um, again, federal agencies as far as how to do the claiming for the meals that we are serving. Dead service fund. Uh, net cash flow was twenty-one million. We know we have two payment dates during the school year, February fifteenth and August fifteenth. So until then, we will just, um, be accruing, uh, funds for those August payments. And athletic funds, two-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand dollars year-to-date. And that's the presentation. Thank you.
I know you can't, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, I, I know you can't look into a crystal ball, but given all that we've seen from the collapse in oil prices and shutting, slowing and shutting, slowing economy, do you have any for, any visibility or thoughts on what we could be looking at down the road? Certainly not maybe even into the next legislative session?
You know, Mr. Witt's gonna be presenting a lot of on our potential bond sale, and he has a lot of information regarding the economy and our outlook and the fact that we don't have a crystal ball, as we well know. We're also getting information from our appraisal districts as soon as they know things. So we're all kind of in a holding pattern at the moment, which is I'm sure the same as you are. But we know something will change. We're just not sure how significant that will be.
Okay.
Like we said earlier, you know, while everybody was busy back slapping and parades for House Bill 3 down in Austin, that wasn't sustainable from the top, and now you throw this into it. They refer to as a black, they not only refer to it as a black swan event, but two black swan events. One is COVID-19, and the other is the oil prices that you point out.
Right.
And the bulk of the state budget comes from, I believe, oil. So it's as great as it is to be driving up to a pump and not paying out the nose to fill your vehicle, that has the very opposite effect to the state economy, and then that goes over to us as a school district. And so they're gonna, they're gonna take, they're gonna be forced to take a big chunk of the, their rainy day fund to fund this year. And no telling how much they're gonna have to take, or willing to take next year out of next year's rainy day fund to wrap up the second year of the biennium.
Right.
It absolutely is going to affect all school districts to how deep that's going to be. Really, there's no way. I guess it ultimately, that'll ultimately depend on who is correct at the national level. Is this, is the rebound gonna be a V or a U? And so we really don't know other than, well, typically all news from Austin is bad news for us, but this, this is a, will be a different layer of probably not the best news.
Got it. Thank you. Okay, we need a motion to approve the financial investment tax report for March 2020.
This is Mays. I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mays.
This is Deborah Smith. I'm second motion.
Thank you, Deborah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we will consider that approved. Budget amendments? I don't guess we have any budget amendments? I don't think we do.
No budget amendments. Now I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Witt.
Mr. Witt.
He will see if we remotely do his presentation. Are you there, Mr. Witt?
I am. Can y'all hear me?
Yes, sir.
I can see Mr. Witt, I can envision Mr. Witt sitting at home in his home office in his full three-piece suit with his.
Exactly what's taking place.
Yes, I believe it. I absolutely believe it.
Okay, so we've accomplished the removal of the mute, so that's working. And now.
Over your control bar, and you'll share your screen.
Okay. Share screen?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's give it a second. There we go. All right.
Okay. Is that working for everybody?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. It's good to be with you. And I have a presentation here. It's a little more lengthy than normal, but we've had a lot of obvious tumult in the markets and so forth that I'd like to share with you. And I'm not sure if you can stop me at any time for questions, but if you wish to, please do. If not, we can cover them at the end as well. So the first slide here is the bond buyers index of municipal bonds. It's the graph that you've seen from us in the past. The average runs across the middle at 4.25%. The high occurred in October of 2008, which was another market meltdown. And we're on the opposite end of that now down here with the current environment. We had actually reached a record low before COVID, and then we bounced way up, and then we've bounced right back down. So this 249 is last week, and we believe that we're a little bit lower than that going forward. So we are at near-record-low rates, but it's that this particular graph does not tell the whole story. This one here is a graph you've not seen from us in the past. We call it municipal market movement. Down here you see MMD. It's called the municipal market data curve. The bars in green are where we started the year in January 1st. And then the line graphs are what has taken place since then. So we reached a low on March 9th, which was basically pre-market turmoil. And then in a very short period of time, through March 9th to March 20th, we hit a recent high. And this is a 200 basis point or 2% jump in rates in essentially a weak period, one week or a week and a half period. That is a massive amount of municipal bond sell-off, a massive amount of illiquidity in our market, investors running for cover. They were selling off every asset class, not just equities. They were selling off municipal bonds and so forth. Since that March 20 timeframe, though, we've come back down to basically where we were to start the year. And I was mentioning earlier to some staff members that we actually had six municipal bond transactions. Texas School Bond, they were refunding bonds, not new money, in the market last week, and all of them were absorbed. Some of them were heavily bid on, and so we had a very functioning market last week that took on what you might consider moderate supply of bonds in the market. So this week we'll price additional bonds. There's all indications that we'll have a functioning municipal bond market throughout the nation and especially for our higher-grade Texas school bonds. Here's a look at kind of our yield curve, where we talk about the one-year rates going up to the 30-year rates. We actually are tracking two different curves now. The tax-exempt curve, which is our traditional interest rate curve, because we can issue our bonds on a tax-exempt basis. We now track a taxable curve as well, because in 2017, with the federal tax bill, the law changed that prohibited municipal issuers, including school districts, ability to refund bonds in advance of the call date on a tax-exempt basis. So now we measure a taxable curve to see if we want to do a taxable advanced refunding, or we can do a current refunding, which is on or near the optional redemption call date of a bond, and we can do that still on a tax-exempt basis. So occasionally, if our taxable market is extremely low, then we may consider advanced refunding bonds, which I'll talk about momentarily. But generally, we will be refunding bonds on a specific schedule that's given to us by the optional redemption call date. Whereas prior to 2017, we could do a tax-exempt refunding before or during the call date. So here, there is a spread. There is a complete disconnect between the federal treasury curve and all other markets for interest rates. The federal treasury curve is being bid down to extremely low levels, but we no longer trend or spread with the, the federal treasury curve. These are independent of that, and therefore we're not showing that treasury curve anymore. So that's a look at our current market. This slide is the authorized but unissued bonds, 2007. We've exhausted that authorization with three very healthy-sized transactions, 2017, 2018, 2019. And then with the 2019 bond election of a billion three, you may recall that in October of 2019, we issued 100 million of that. 50 million of it was fixed-rate bonds, and 50 million of it was this new flexible security called a soft-put variable rate bond, where you're able to reset that rate every three years. And so we have the authorized but unissued bonds that we can pull off the shelf and issue as we can afford it and as we need it for construction. So speaking of construction, this slide is the status of the funding for the projects. So all prior bonds have, will complete you through middle school number four, elementary school number 12, new buses and technology that has been spent to date. Now, where we are today and the way this presentation is designed is what amount of money do we need to complete current contracts? Contracts for design, contracts for land purchase, contracts for construction. So give me that amount, and then let me show what it's going to take in an uncertain environment of how much tax base we need to absorb that amount of bonds. So this should read elementary school number 13 and number 14. So some of the land purchased to date was funded by prior bonds. This next issue will cover some additional land, the finish out of elementary school number 13 and 14, and the design of high school number three. There is no money in this 55 million for high school construction or any money in this 55 million for middle school number five design or construction or number 15 and number 16, design or construction. Those will be based on future economic activity. So those items from the high school construction to the design of the middle school number five and elementary number 15 and 16 are on hold, pending some sort of data that we can get that shows that we'll continue on some pace of growth as we've done in the past. So again, that amounts to 55 million, the bulk of it being to complete number 13 and number 14. If we do the 55 million, then any next sale date will be determined, and we'll give you and your finance committee a status update. So to your point, Mr. Bridges, what is the world that we're looking at? Well, before we answer that, let's look back to where we were before this. And here, my mouse is. So in 2014, 15, you had a $3 billion taxable value. Today, you have a 9.7 billion. That is a massive amount of growth over a five-year period. You averaged about a billion three of growth during that five-year period, but the, the low point was 778 million, and the high point was a billion seven. This, just last year, the 1920 year that you're working under, you grew at a billion five. And you may know that January is the timeframe from which the appraisal district assesses value. And of course, January was pre any indication of economic distress. And so there was a 2020, 21, pre-COVID estimate of 1.3-plus billion from the Collin appraisal district. What we have today is just an email that says, "A lot of that will still be on the books, but we are going to, in some sense, revalue based on present value of sales, some of those properties." And we do not have any indication of whether or not that billion three is going to be a billion two or a billion or some other number. Not to skip ahead in the presentation, but the assumption to absorb the 55 million is that the billion three preliminary estimate will be a billion, and we're taking our collection percentage down as just an assumption from 99% to 95%. You'll see that on a graph from me in just a moment. So again, there's no crystal ball here that says our growth is going to actually be $1 billion this coming year, but because we're already well into the appraisal process and the certification process, which is finalized in July, we think that by shaving off the 300-plus million to take it down to a billion is a decent working number for us. Now, the real question is, okay, if we go from a billion three down to a billion, and we have that certified, what is our growth for the next two years? Because we will need some additional growth to absorb the 55 million. So again, you'll see from me those numbers, but basically we're cutting the assumed growth by two-thirds, down to about a third of your normal, to be able to absorb and reach a equilibrium status to be able to absorb the 55 million. Your fund balance at the bottom of this slide is very healthy. You're at 12 and a half million estimated at the end of 1920. And again, that's 25% of your overall budget, but our game plan for building that up has always been to utilize it in times where we're issuing bonds in advance of taxable value growth. So the summary of the plan of finance as it stands today is 55 million as early as June 2020 closing. We're probably going to push that back to get a certified value in July, but that's something that we're discussing with the administration. Again, it's fixed-rate bonds. There's not a dual issuance here, although the order allows for it and provides you with the flexibility. Right now, the game plan is to issue the first set of bonds from this new order on your agenda in the fixed-rate mode. We plan to remain at 50 cents. The maximum maturity is planned to be 30 years on this new issuance. Again, use of some of the INS fund balance or bond premium in order to deal with the interest that's flowing up. As I just mentioned, the taxable value growth needed to absorb 55 million is approximately a billion in 2021, with some use of INS fund balance in that same fiscal year, and then approximately 400 million of growth for the next two years. And again, from your kind of billion five level, that's a substantial reduction in growth going forward. That's not a prediction. It's just a what do we need? And we took 400 million and 400 million on an even basis between those two years. It's very likely that the first year will be less than the second year as the economy picks back up. But again, we divided what we needed to get to by two to show 400 million per year. What that looks like graphically is the bars in black here are your outstanding principal and interest that you have issued to date. The light green color here is 55 million layered on top of that, again, going 30 years. The red is the use of the INS fund balance, so your payments will be here. We'll collect taxes on hopefully a billion dollars of growth that will take us here. We'll collect on another 400 million and use some fund balance there. And then if we add 400 more million, then we're talking about growing from our tax base today to 11.6 billion sometime in the next three years. So from 9.7 up to 11.6, which 50 cents on 11.6 billion produces exactly 57 and a half million, which would be your total principal and interest. The other assumption in here that you can't see on paper is we're assuming 95% collections here, 97% here, 99% here. Your normal collection percentage, as you heard from Ms. Fulmer before, is around 100%. It would not shock me if your collection percentage this time next year is trending down from some of the entities paying, not being able to pay their taxes or deferring or delaying. So that's how this program works.
How soon do you?
I'm sorry?
How soon, you said July, we'll get the final number from the appraisal district? Is that early, late? You have any idea?
That's by law the timeframe that's normal at the end of July. It's a specific date, somewhere around July 25th, July 28th is the deadline for them to certify the value.
Okay, so we have, we have a couple of months to gather more information as we wait for that, right?
That's exactly right. And the thing that I would caution about is if that number turns out to be, for example, a billion dollars, do not assume that that's business as usual, because that appraisal started in January. That's the date of which those valued properties are to be. That's the date of which those valued properties are to be assessed and then certified in July. So, there is some look back based on this email of methodology that the appraisal district sent to the administration. But we're expecting not a complete reversal of what they were looking at in January. But if they do certify, for example, a billion dollars of growth, that in no way means that January of next year, there will not be a much more massive revaluation and a much more massive trend of less new value coming in from construction. Does that make sense, what I'm describing there?
Yeah, yes, sir. Sadly, it does.
Yeah, hence the reason that we've kind of built our model in this manner.
Well, I hope you're being way conservative, 400 million, but.
Agreed. Okay. So, let's. I mentioned refunding earlier. Again, we do not have the ability to do a tax-exempt refunding of bonds that are callable in February of 2024 or 2025. They're the only bonds of significance that we have available for us to refund. You may recall that in 2010, exactly 10 years ago, we were a relatively slow issuer of bonds. And then as we grew out of that national recession and into the ability to access those bonds, we will see optional redemption call dates every year or every six months going forward, starting in about 2024. But all we have right now coming up is a small amount of previous refunding bonds that there's not any savings of significance. So, if we refund bonds today to take advantage of a market, it will be a taxable refunding. And we can do that anytime and you're delegating authority to the administration to do that. The reality is, is that a taxable advance refunding does not make economic sense today with the post-COVID markets. But markets do change and that could change in the next 12 months. And if it does, we want to be in a position to take advantage of that. The most likely scenario, though, is that we will refund these bonds on a tax-exempt basis on or near the optional redemption call date of February of '24. If that actually comes to fruition, this will be on your agenda in 2023. We do and have built in flexibility with this bond, knowing that we did not have a whole lot of call dates. And so, we do have a near-term 2023 reset date for the 50 million variable rate bonds that you had before. And so, that builds in some debt service flexibility and structuring flexibility for us going forward. Schedule of events, we started meeting with the staff in February, outlining kind of how we're going to fund not just 13 and 14, but high school three, middle school five, 15 and 16. We kind of had this multi-year model of how much do we have to grow in order to finance those particular projects? And then approximately a day or two before we met with the finance committee, the markets really started reflecting what became very evident, and that's that we have a biological or medical problem. And so, we met with the finance committee. At that time, we did not have as much data as we have today. And hence the reason I'm spending a little more time on this, Mr. Bridges, to kind of cover the market since when we met on March 16th. We then talked about on April 8th with the administration, this kind of funding levels in and around the 50 million to actually complete what we've already done and then kind of buy you a window, I don't know, maybe six months to let this play out to see if we are in a V-shaped recovery, an L-shaped market, a U-shaped market? What exactly will be taking place in the world and specifically here in our district going forward? I agree with what was said earlier that there's really two components to this. Number one is there is the COVID problem. But number two is in Texas, the economy in some respects has a very large connection to oil and gas. And so, really in North Texas, we're less impacted by the oil and gas industry, whereas West Texas and the Gulf Coast truly is. But I think there could be some bleed over to our North Texas economy from that as well. So, tonight, we're reviewing the plan of finance. We're adopting actually two orders. You're providing maximum flexibility with your agenda items tonight. One is if we decide to do another variable rate issue, you're given that delegated authority. If we do decide to do a taxable advance refunding, you're given that delegated authority. And then, of course, you're delegating authority to issue some of the billion that was approved by the voters. In the near term, that's going to be approximately 55 million in fixed-rate form. The actual timing of that, again, the options being considered are now to take advantage of today's market, which is very good, or maybe in July preparation, lock in the rate in August, close in September. And the benefit of that is we have a certified value and we know what we're working with from the appraisal district. So, those are the timing options that are being considered after your board action today.
Do we have any questions for Doug? Mays, do you have any thoughts on this, timing-wise?
No, I mean, I think it makes sense to me to, I mean, upon further information, but leaning towards, you know, waiting to get the assessed value because I think it'll be interesting to see what those come in because when we all get our appraisals, we're thinking about values today versus January 1. So, I think there'll be some downward pressure on those valuations. And to me, it'd be nice to see what that was because I don't think we want to use too much of that fund balance to be able to handle that.
Good. May I also have thoughts on that?
So, Mr. Witt, there's two actions. One is for fixed-rate bonds and the other is for flexible rate bonds. And what's the total amount that you're asking or recommending from the board tonight to give you maximum flexibility to pounce in the market?
Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Fulmer, but I think the order itself allows some number like 200 million of authorized but unissued bonds. But that's just in there for flexibility. There's no real, there's no real data that would indicate we have the ability to issue anywhere near that. So, the board is authorizing more than the 55 million, but we'd probably give them an update, even though it didn't take a board action, if we sold more than that.
That's correct, Doug.
Yeah, I'm with Mays. In terms of, you know, in terms of timing, I would feel much better once we had the data for July before we pulled the trigger on anything. I mean, you'd hate to, you'd hate to issue these and then just find out that it was much worse than we thought. We've kind of been in that position before.
Yeah, the 55. I'll have that to look back at.
I'm just talking about the timing of those two options you showed at the bottom there, Doug.
Correct.
But Jim, I don't think we're making, are we making the decision now on?
No. No, you're, the decision you guys typically make is the amount on, ultimately, given the authorization to the admin to work with Doug Witt and his team to jump in the window at the most appropriate time.
Yeah, so I think that's still to be determined. I think those were just options that would be considered. I think tonight, we're just approving, giving them the authority to do that.
Okay.
Yeah, the order is delegated authority for up to 12 months. So, to your point, you're delegating authority to issue more than 55 million. Right now, we believe 55 million kind of completes what we have committed to. And I, you know, I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth, but I think to, for example, say, let's go build middle school number five, I think you're going to want to see a little bit more data, you know, medical and economic as to saying, okay, we think we can move forward with that.
Yeah, Drew, I mean, I don't think we're also, we're not also saying we're not going to have the need for this construction. And, but I think we're still going to have, assumingly, kids moving in. It's just we're not going to necessarily have the money when we would hope to have the money to build the facilities. Is that a fair statement?
No, that's a completely accurate statement. That's, we, even in the recession in 2009, we were, even though our value level, you know, bottomed out, we were still growing in students. So, that's going to happen. I mean, it would, it would work to our benefit if one was connected to the other. But since there's such an inventory of housing available right now, sitting on the ground, it's not going to be as in lockstep as some might think or in some other, you know, districts. So, we'll certainly have the need. And that's basically what this does is if we have the need and, that's the big and, and the capacity based on values, then we can, because this is going to push, you know, it sort of sounds not too bad at the moment that, okay, so what? Well, we can't start middle school five and high school three. Well, we really don't need that just yet. We're not even in high school two, we're not even in middle school. Well, the lead time on those projects is really two and a half to three years. High school's even a little more than that in terms of all that you're doing leading up to that. So, it pushes that back, that timeline back another year for every year we have to kick. So, even though in the moment, it might not seem to be that big of a deal, when we get three years from now and we still don't have those facilities, that's when, that's where the pinch point is. So, but that's something we have no control over. I mean, we can't build what we don't have the money to build for. It's just, it's going to be, I'd like to think, given the, just the magnitude of this economic issue, that everyone in the community will get it. But at the end of the day, all they know is they voted to support selling bonds to stay ahead of the growth. So, why can't we? And that'll be our responsibility to make sure we can communicate that effectively to our community.
History is repeating itself and we've done it before, so it looks like we'll have to do it again.
Unfortunately, you're right, Miss McBride.
Yeah, I think so.
We couldn't staff it even if we could build it.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, that's part two of that and that's a big deal. Yeah, exactly right. So, Mr. Witt, there's two different actions. And I know the overall word that was shared with the board finance subcommittee sometime earlier and tonight is the ultimate authorization of 200 million, knowing that the first step of that's 55 million and the market will dictate and our values will dictate what we can do beyond that. How does that need to be broken up or split up between the two items of fixed rate and flexible rate? Or does it start at this time?
So, the order by adopting it will have two action items and it allows for the both modes because the legal structure of the variable rate bond is different than the legal structure of the fixed-rate bond. That's where we need two orders. And so, if, does the board have the motion that's necessary in front of them?
They don't have it in front of them, but it's, it might be in the past, I don't know.
Well, we do have, we have on the agenda item, we've got agenda item 7C and D. Doesn't have a dollar amount.
Yeah, and Mr. Bridges, you do not need the dollar amount in there. It's within the orders. And so, someone saying, you know, I approve of motion 7C, it's almost identical motion as how it reads exactly on the, on the agenda.
Okay.
And one more clarification, the fixed-rate bonds is where we have the new money portion as well as that potential taxable advance refunding that, again, we don't anticipate using in the near term, but at least it's on there for flexibility purposes.
Okay, good.
Need a motion for?
Yeah, for purposes of clarity, let's just somebody make a motion for agenda item 7C and one for 7D. Let's start with 7C.
I'll have a motion for 7C.
Is that you, Michelle?
Yes, it is, Michelle Mayrak.
It's Mays, I'll second that.
Second, great. All in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed? Hearing none, motion 7C passes. Do we have a motion for 7D?
This is Kelly, I'll make a motion for 7D.
Thank you, Kelly.
And this is Jana and I'll second.
Great, thank you, Jana. All in favor?
Aye.
The opposed? Hearing none, motion, item 7D passes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Witt, thank you, Mr. Witt.
Yes, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have the approval of the food service management contract. We were at the end of the five years. So, instead of just extending it like we have been, we went out for it this year. Given, you know my feeling on that, we've, I've shared sometime. In my perfect world, we will eventually bring it in-house and not contract this out. But given all kinds of issues, we wanted to wait and see how these bids would come in to see how that would look. And had three, Sedexo, SFE, which is Southwest Food Service Excellence, and Chartwells were the three that put in. And at the end of the day, they were ranked accordingly in how they looked in terms of management fees and administrative fees and then the guarantee, which is the big number. And the recommendation, and I'm sorry, it's not in your packet because it was just finished this weekend or today possibly, for SFE, which comes with a guarantee of $900,000. The next closest was, excuse me, Chartwells with a guarantee of $634,000 and Sedexo then with $500,000. And so, by comparison, the guarantee we have right now with SFE, I want to say is 225, but I could be selling it short. Dr. Bradley, you know that number or Ms. Fulmer?
It was in the $300,000 range.
Okay, that's quite a leap.
I'm sorry.
That's quite a jump from 300 to 100.
So, as Dr. Bradley put it, either they have been sticking it to us and making a crazy lot of money or they're looking at the market, they want to protect this particular contract and really stepped up to the plate. I hope it's the latter, but that's a good number. It's a very competitive number and it's a number that really puts us at peace with continuing them another year. And so, that's the recommendation for SFE at the rates that I stated. Dr. Bradley, got anything to add on that?
I would just add that we, we looked at the other two. I think their bids, the guarantee doesn't tell the whole story in these bids. But like I say, SFE has improved their service over the last year. And in this situation, I think everyone on the team who had a part feels confident with going forward with SFE.
Everybody's comfortable with the quality of the food and that's always the question at the end of the day is how much stuff is getting chunked in the trash can at the elementary schools?
Some days. You know, they got a new chef. I mean, like we mentioned, I think a couple of months or so, a few months ago. So, you know, right now, it's, you know, obviously, they've been great. The last month and a half, we hadn't been in school. That's really not fair to say, but, you know, with what we were seeing before COVID, it was improvement with some people that they changed and in crucial position. So, it leaves rooms for some optimism.
Good. Other questions about this from the board? Other questions about this in the board? All right, hearing none, we'll entertain a motion.
Deborah Smith will make a motion to award the food service management contract to SFE.
Thank you, Deborah, give a second.
I'll second, this Jana Thompson.
Thank you, Jana, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right. Seven E passes.
Seven F is just, uh, really updating a, a change to local policy as it pertains to, uh, student transfers. Uh, more specifically, we're, uh, with regard to children of employees.
These are kids coming in, right?
Yes, sir. It's really, uh, uh, cleaning up for UIL.
Got it. And I've had a chance to see it in your packets. Anybody have any questions or comments on that? All right, hearing none, we'll entertain a motion for item seven F.
Bill, I'll make a motion.
I heard Michelle, but I'll give Bill a second. Does that work?
It works, yes, sir.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none, seven F passes.
Seven G, it's, uh, for custodial services, services for the new PISD secondary campuses. You can see that, uh, falls there in terms of, uh, what was, who put in. The recommendation is to go with, uh, AHI, AHI facility services for the eight hundred and seventy-eight, uh, one eighty-three, uh, for, uh, Rock Hill and Rushing and the new transportation facility over there by Rock Hill. The existing secondary campus will be continuing with ABM. That's accurate, correct, Dr. Bradley?
Yes, sir, ABM will stay servicing the other secondary campuses in the district for the coming year. Uh, but we are recommending AHI for the new facilities. Uh, Mr. Roberts and his team have gone to several facilities, several schools, uh, in the area of the AHI services, and we're pleased, uh, with what they saw there. And so we, we were recommending AHI and, and in all honesty, have a, a little, uh, competition, uh, in the days to come between, uh, the two, uh, companies.
Yeah, very good.
Yeah.
Any questions or comments on that? Okay, it's item seven G.
I make a motion, this is Mays, to approve AHI custodial.
Thank you, Mays.
New secondary campuses.
And I'll second that, this Jana Thompson.
Thank you, Jana, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, seven G passes.
Seven H, we have, uh, just adding a pool of companies, uh, that we possibly will tap into to move furniture and, and equipment throughout the year, uh, as needed. Oftentimes, uh, we can, uh, use our own people, uh, for that. But, uh, every once in a while, we'll, we'll need to contract some of that out. And that, this just identifies a group of contractors that we want to go with.
Okay, any questions or comments on seven H? Hearing none, let's entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to accept the three contractors listed for contract services.
Thank you, Jana, second.
Deborah Smith will second.
Thank you, Deborah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and any opposition? Then we will consider seven H having passed.
Seven I, getting into the, uh, GMP for elementary thirteen. One little tiny, uh, correction on that is, uh, shows twenty-two, one, six, zero, six, nine, five, and the actual number is twenty-two, one, eight, seven, six, zero, five. Uh, small difference, but, uh, wanted to correct that number before you consider action. By, by comparison, uh, which would be, uh, elementary twelve, uh, Johnson Elementary, that came in, uh, with the up brand, I believe, of nineteen million.
So, gosh.
Yeah, that kind of number just sort of jumped. Uh, we're hoping for less. Uh, the one big difference is, uh, one has a storm shelter as required, the other one does not. That's about a million dollar difference and, uh, but, uh, you know, it's just the market. I don't, I don't have anything good to say to, uh, to, uh, celebrate this number, considering what we're building twelve for. But, y- y- you know, it's, uh, we can't do anything about it. So recommend the twenty-two, eight, one, eight, seven, six, oh, five number. Dr. Bradley, you have anything to say on that?
Just going quickly, what you said, uh, I, I, we were all kind of hopeful, uh, that it would be more in the twenty-one, five range. I would point out that while this elementary is substantially more expensive, as you pointed out, the, the, uh, the storm shelter causes some increase in price. Building in McKinney as opposed to Salina had some cost. Uh, but this, this price at twenty-two million, uh, while substantially higher than Johnson, is still cheaper than what we built Boyer and Spradley for. And, uh, so while it is more than we were all hopeful for, uh, I, it would be difficult to suggest it's out of bounds. Uh, we worked with Poe quite a while and, uh, we basically took the low bid on every subcontractor, uh, on this job. And so, um, I think we are seeing a little bit, uh, of a scared market at the moment. Uh, but, um, nonetheless, this is the number we're bringing to the board tonight.
Okay. Any questions or comments on that? All right, so the number is twenty-two, one, eighty?
One, eight, seven, six, zero, five.
Okay. All right, can I get a, uh, motion to approve this GMP, that, that number? Scared him.
It's Mays. It was Mays, I'm making the motion.
Thank you, Mays. Get a second?
This is Kelly, I'll second.
Thank you, Kelly, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we approve the GMP, agenda item seven I.
You want to seven J, uh, consideration of possible action approval of new purchase, or purchase of a new system that brought increased security, uh, for infrastructure, uh, to the tune of a hundred and fifty thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars, ninety-two cents. Mr. DeValasco, do you have anything you want to speak to with regard to this item?
Um, I don't have anything. If anybody has any questions, this is to further secure our server infrastructure. Um, that's basically the, the core of this request.
And that's an annual, uh, that's not a one-time fee, that is, uh, an annual, uh, expense.
To be renewed on yearly basis, yes.
Okay. Do we, we want to, will we approve this yearly or will it just roll into the budget?
This is a new system and that's why we, we need to, um, to approve, we're presenting it for approval.
The, the question, the question for now is, will this be an annual item of, of approval? Or once they approve it, uh, then is it just built into, uh, the technology budget?
It will be built within the technology budget.
Okay.
Very, uh, this is one of your thing though, uh, Bridges, if it's, it'll depend on how the one, the contract is written. Uh, and, uh, Fernando, you might speak to that because if it's, if it's a year-to-year thing, it's going to have to be something that's, uh, that's approved annually by you guys.
Yes, okay.
Because then the amount could change, could it not?
Certainly, well, it will as we, as we grow campuses, everything else, it will not go, go down.
Well, the world we live in, this is a.
Yeah, very important.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion to approve the purchase of the new system at the chosen bid of what is stated there.
Great, thank you, Jana, get a second?
Michelle will second.
Thank you, Michelle, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, we pass motion seven K.
Another, uh, technology-related item with the renewal of the Microsoft licensing. That's the, the recommended bid is one oh two, eight fifty-five, sixteen, and this is, uh, uh, another annual requirement.
So did we do this last year also?
Not this one because it was under a hundred.
Uh.
Okay. Okay. So this is a yearly thing also?
That is correct.
Okay.
This is budgeted and carry year to year.
Great, okay.
Yes.
More questions on this one? All right, can I get a motion on seven K, please?
Deborah Smith made a motion to approve seven K.
Thank you, Deborah, can I get a second?
It's Bill, I'll second.
Thank you, Bill, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, seven K passes. I think I said seven K earlier, I meant seven J. So now we're on, that was J then K, and now we're on L. This is like the longest list you've ever given us, Drew.
No.
I think so.
Uh, we're really pushing this, so no, I, I just kept going, I had to, I'd create new letters on the board packet. I hadn't had to do that. Consideration, uh, on possible approval of, to replace the PHS turf at the baseball field, softball field, the Reynolds Middle School indoor, and to resurface the track at PHS. So all those are up, uh, uh, really the, the worst of all, the, in the worst shape of all of those is Reynolds Middle School indoor. That turf might have gotten replaced since it's an original construction. I can't remember that. It's been that long, so it's, uh, but, uh, this is what, uh, Dr. Bradley and his team, uh, uh, did a, you see, that's broken down there. Went out for bid and, well, he gandered that just for a second before I pulled back.
I know we've replaced, I remember, I remember last time we played, replaced the turf at the old football stadium. There was a, it was some sort of warranty we were still under. Is that, any of that applied to these fields?
No, they're, they're all, uh, it's all ten-plus years.
Right.
So it's, uh, uh, well, that would be terrific. Uh, but no, it's, it's, uh, served its useful life and there's no, it's tough to gauge that because it's, the, really the biggest variable will be what water you have during that time period and so, uh, how, how, you know, the damage that's done to that. Uh, and when it, when the turf starts just, uh, well, when the turf, it gets all over you just like grass does and it's, that means it's coming apart, uh, then it's, uh, it gets harder and harder. So it, then it becomes a, uh, a safety factor in terms of, you know, how you land on it and everything else. It's a, it's a bigger issue. Uh, what, uh, the recommendation of, of Dr. Bradley's team is, uh, since, uh, environmental turf services was the low bid, they don't have a, uh, a, uh, a broad enough background in this field or with clients that we are familiar with to grant them the entire bid, but we didn't want to just be dismissive of it, let them do the Reynolds Middle School indoor. Uh, and if, if that's, if they prove to have a good product, have a good product and service it, uh, like other vendors do that we have experience with, then that will open the door for them to be considered for bigger jobs. Paragon, we've had experience with all positive experience. So the recommendation is really to split the bid, uh, giving, uh, the Reynolds Indoor to Environmental Turf Services and then paragon the rest, uh, of those projects, pitch of softball, baseball and the track. Dr. Bradley, anything else you want to speak to?
No, that, that summed it up, but, um, I'll answer any questions if there are any with that, uh, you can use some of the.
Hey, this is Mays, is, I mean, is this kind of like technology where there's a given useful life and you just automatically change it out after X number of years? Or if I were to walk on the softball field or the baseball field, I would see wear and tear on the whole thing? Because I mean, I go, I mean, with Lucas playing baseball, I've been to the games and it, from the stands, it doesn't look bad. But I just didn't know, is this, is this something that just has a useful life and you just automatically do it? Or is there something we could do to, to maybe potentially delay this or get a few more years out of it?
Well, I, my, the answer to that is, no, it's not like technology where we, we shoot for an extra plan and rotate, uh, that equipment out, uh, because of new and improved technology. Whereas you can, you know, you could, we could ride computers in the classroom or whatever else, X more years than we're doing right now. Uh, but that's not this. Now, you know, there, the, the, if you will, the, the life of, of turf can be anywhere, useful life can be anywhere from ten to twelve, thirteen years depending on its exposure during that time. Uh, but it is sort of an optical illusion when you look from the stands. I will tell you on the baseball field, uh, it, it has, it has zero cushion and it is, uh, it's coming apart. Uh, when I say coming apart, that the blades are coming apart from it. Uh, I mean, just at will, it's, there, there's nothing really holding it together. So it's time, does that mean, uh, you know, we couldn't get another year out of it? Uh, those things can always be, uh, stretched and done and everything else. It just depends on where the threshold is and with regard to what are we wanting to provide? Uh, and yes, should, will we be faced with some choices that, decisions that, well, you know, that'd be great, but now I can't do it, we got to do this, 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 that, that takes a, a higher priority. Uh, uh, we were looking to do these things a year ago and I kicked the can to this year. So I've already kicked the can a little bit, you might want us to kick it, y'all might want us to kick it a little bit longer. Uh, but, uh, uh, it was, it was really ready to be done a year ago.
Watkins, uh, I would just add to that, the, um, the, the major, um, factor, uh, with the life of turf is sun. And that's why we were able to get twenty years out of the Reynolds turf because it's not in the sun and elements every day. And just so the board knows, uh, the, the, uh, uh, Rock Hill, we could have put the turf down on the baseball and softball field and football field at Rock Hill. Uh, we would have been ready to do so six or eight months ago. And the reason it's not down yet is just because we wanted to, uh, spare six months of sun on it because that's what tears the turf up most.
Hmm. Drew, that's helpful. Any other question, Mays, that answered your question?
It did.
Other questions, comments? All right, hearing that, we've been asked for a, a motion on this item.
It's Bill, I'll make a motion.
Okay, for seven L, you have a second?
Michelle will second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none. Seven L passes, new turf.
Seven M, if you remember, this was, uh, this, uh, resolution was on, uh, the agenda for the, I believe, the special meeting that we had, uh, uh, last month. And it was carryover to expire, uh, April twentieth and less updated. Uh, really, uh, get where we were in and where we are now. I thought, maybe I'm being overly optimistic. I think we're on the other side of, uh, not having so many unanswered questions with, are we going to come back to school, are we not going to come back to school, all those and the decision. All those and the decisions that would go into that. And since, and since I, I, that's, that part's in our rearview mirror, I really, I really don't think we need to do this. So it's okay with you, Mr. Bridges, I just soon skip this one and.
Yeah, but let's, let's do that. And I mean, I think the other difference is, you know, like everybody else in America, I, I think all of us are going to be pretty easy, easy to catch. So if there is, there is a need for emergency meeting, we can get together pretty quickly, I think.
Well, and especially since they've given us such latitude on virtual.
Right.
So.
Okay, well, let's, let's, let's skip that one then. So 7N.
N, which is the GMP for the renovations at Rucker. And what do I have on that?
Sent those out in an email, right?
Yeah, that is, even though I don't have it in your packet, that's for 1.048746 million. And this was the, one of the projects that, the primary project we were going to do in Rucker under the, the bond referendum that was recently passed. And that's to secure the front area a little more effectively. And that's by adding a hallway behind the administrative area for that traffic, that foot traffic to go behind. That's where that sort of interior parking lot is on that side. And we can better control that, that front entrance area and pass it off and wall it off and have a more secure vestibule there.
So kids won't be walking back and forth to the cafeteria across the front of the school?
Correct, yes.
Oh, okay.
Exactly. So they'll, that'll all be funneled on the backside of, of the offices there. And we need to, we just need to do some work in some restrooms over there. It looks like a dark hole. I'm, I mean, I'm an old man, I'm afraid to go in them. So I mean, it's, we need, we need to bring them up and, and update those a little. Comes to the bottom price, like I said, of 48 million.
Dr. Watkins, does that mean that it will be completed before the start of school, no problem?
I like that, no problem at the end. Dr. Bradley, you got an opinion on that?
Well, that's, that's why we did, we, we rushed to get this on this agenda because our intention now that school has been closed for the rest of the year is start immediately. I had a conversation even with POG on Friday. And I, and I would like to add, I think this, this GMP, to be honest with you, is a little bit high because we were just, we wanted to make sure we didn't come back to you two months later and say, hey, we, we, we knocked into a wall here and had a little bigger problem. So we built in some pretty healthy contingencies in this. I'm very hopeful and I think POG is very hopeful that the total price of this project is substantially lower than a million dollars. But Rucker is a little bit of a unique building and we wanted to make sure that before, that we had enough contingency money in there before we started removing some tiles and bathrooms. But I, I do believe with, especially now being able to start early, having this completed before August should not be an issue.
Thank you.
Any other questions on 7N as in Nancy? Okay, hearing none, we'll take a motion.
This is Jana, I'd like to make the motion to pertaining to the renovations at Rucker to proceed with that.
Okay, thank you, Jana. You got a second?
Deborah Smith will second the motion.
Thank you, Deborah. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Hearing none, 7N passes. Okay.
Mr. President, if we can.
Yes, I like that.
Going to, going to executive session, I want to say before we do that, for those that are in attendance, it will, this meeting will be closed down. But if you come back later or even stay on, when we come back out of executive session, you know, you'll be able to rejoin. Just click the, click the registration link and you'll be able to rejoin. I can't give you a time because I can't, I don't know how long the executive session will be. But I just want, for those that are in attendance online, we'll let you know that we'll be going into executive session, discussing some items. And then if there's any action to be had, then come out to take that action.
Great. Thank Drew. I need a motion to go to executive session.
This is Mays, I'm moved.
Thank you, Mays, second?
This is Bill, I'll second.
Thank you, Bill. I think I heard Bill, sorry, Kelly. All in favor?
Hi.
Motion passed, let's, executive session. Thank you, everybody. We will, like Drew said, we'll get back on, I'm just not sure when it'll be. So stay tuned if you're inclined.
Board members, you'll sign out of this and then you'll log into the executive meeting.
Thank you. All right, Jim is here. All right. Everybody here?
Yes.
Yes.
Just a second. Okay, I want to try to get this in the, in the open session, but I'm on, earlier, but I'm going to show you guys the video, the Huckabee video for High School 3.
Okay.
Y'all see that?
No.
No.
There we go.
Now y'all see that?
Yes.
Okay, I'll go ahead and start this thing.
One of our students.
The presentation for High School 3. And after hearing what we heard tonight, who knows when that'll be built? Are you, are you seeing it?
It's not moving. Like, looks like it's locked up.
I just said.
Is that one of our graduating seniors?
Y'all see that?
No.
No.
Try this again, one more time. See it?
Yes.
Let's see if it works, this. Is it working?
Can't hear it, but it's working. Wow. Whoa.
Beautiful.
Looks awesome.
There we go. Beautiful.
It's just a filler.
Good.
High School 3.
Looks awesome.
Arches are pretty.
Amazing.
I like the red roof. Do we have that in the? It's pretty.
Pretty impressive.
Absolutely.
Hey, Josh, I think you're out there, great job, man.
Yeah, so whoever's on the board when they build that, congratulations.
That was good.
Okay.
All right, so we have consideration on any professional, new professional contract and the status of current personnel for 2021.
All right, so motion required?
I'll make a motion, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
I'll second, I'll second, this is Kelly.
Thank you, Kelly. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Hearing none, 8A passes. 8B.
All right, we've got resignations.
I'll make the motion. Go ahead.
Deborah Smith makes the motion to pass 8A on resignations.
I'm sorry, 8B, it's still showing 8A, sorry.
That's all right. 8B, Deborah makes a motion, second?
And I'll second, this is Jana Thompson.
Thank you, Jana. All in favor? I, I'll opposed. Hearing none, 8B passes.
And who was the second on that, I'm sorry?
Jana. Deborah Jana.
All right. We go to school board meeting, it's going to be May 18th. It will, it'll be, it'll be closed, so it'll be remote. We had a few glitches, but hopefully it wasn't too terribly bad tonight. And then last day of school is still set, May 22nd, 2020. I don't have anything else, Mr. President?
Okay, do I need a motion to adjourn? I can't remember.
No, sir.
Good night, as.
Good night, everybody.
As president of Prosperity, Board of Trustees, I hereby announce this meeting as adjourned.
No, thank you.
Good night, too.
Thanks. Thank you. Bye bye.